Thank you all for joining. This is a special meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, August 1st, 2025. We have one item on our agenda, and Jeff, I'm gonna turn it over to you to see this up. I know we've got a couple other individuals here that will speak to this item, but let's start with you.
Okay, one more time. Commissioners, what you have before you today is a resolution that rescinds the resolution passed at yesterday's board meeting and enacting a new resolution, authorizing the execution of an 11-year lease between the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and the Cincinnati Bengals at Paycor Stadium with the base term running through 2036, June 30th of 2036, and its accompanying management agreement. I walked through most of this yesterday, Commissioners, thanked a lot of people who needed to be thanked at this point, who helped get it to this point, so I'm not gonna belabor that matter. But in yesterday's meeting, I had referenced the fact that as a result of timing, there were some provisions in the lease that was considered by the board yesterday that the team had seen but had not yet signed off on. Ultimately, after further discussions with the team over the past 24 hours, we've modified some of those terms, primarily terms related to parking indemnity, things of that nature. Specifically, the agreement now sets out various thresholds for minimum parking spaces for the team's use on team use days. It provides a cap on the county's liability related to any revenue makeup that the county would owe for falling below those counts. It prescribes that the team will indemnify the county in specific instances. It also makes some changes to the management agreement that tighten up some issues related to reporting requirements, budgeting, contracting process, et cetera. To be clear, the team has reviewed this copy. My understanding is that they are in the process of executing it or have executed it. So I offer this to you today with my recommendation for approval. As you indicated, Commissioner, I'd like to turn it over briefly to Mr. David Abrams, who I believe is with us virtually, and then to Mr. Marty Dunn for any brief comments that they may have before turning it back over to the Commissioners.
David, are you on virtually?
And I'm on video, maybe?
We can hear you.
There we go. How are you all?
We can never see you, David. You're like the voice from above. We can never see you, but we do hear you, so carry on.
I don't think it allows me to be on video, so, oh, there we go.
No, 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 we got you.
Ah, there we go.
Nice shirt, though, yeah.
Thank you. Welcome. I didn't think I was gonna be on video, so I wasn't dressed appropriately, but...
One day it works. Here we are.
Madam President, Board of County Commissioners, Administrator Ludo, we have had in the last 24 hours some activity that, as the Administrator said, there were some inconsistencies in the lease, which we've had some chance to since rectify. We spent, along with your attorneys at Dinsmore, and I would say that what a great group the Dinsmore team is. They guided me along the way, and of course, I know there were some conversations that were had amongst many people, but we were able to revise some of the terms of the lease, and many of these terms have turned out to be advantageous to, I think, to both parties, but also to the county and specifically related to liability. Some limitations on some other exposure related to operations and parking. And we did work late into the evening, night before last, and last night and early this morning, and got agreement on all points. And so appreciate the Bengals' cooperation and their team and their lawyers, as well as everybody on the county side, and so we're good to go at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I don't think there... Are there any questions for David from the County Commissioners? Okay. Commissioner Reese, we good? All right, let's move on to Marty Dunn.
Thank you. As far be it from me to delay this process any longer. It has been a productive week, and the last 24 hours have been particularly productive. We're thankful to Mr. Ludo and to David for his efforts and the whole team, the whole county team, the prosecutor's office pitched in and really made this a strong and productive period. So at this point, I really just want to turn it over to you guys and allow you to do what we've been waiting for for quite some time. We appreciate the opportunity to have been counseled on this as a Dinsmore law firm and look forward to the final resolution of this.
Thank you. All right, so Commissioners, we've got the resolution in front of us. Commissioner Summer Ademus, I'm gonna turn it to you for any comments that you have.
Just a few comments. Of course, once again, I don't want to be redundant, but it's important to say I want to thank all our lawyers. I want to thank our Hamilton County staff. I want to thank our excellent consultants and, of course, our board for not giving up and not giving in. We just stood firm on what we thought was best. So I think that this lease agreement is good for the people, it's good for the team, and I'm proud to be part of a new lease that will be historical. And this, I feel, is the people's lease, and I'm very proud of it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you very much. I too want to thank the team in terms of our legal team and administration, and I feel that you tried to do the best that you could getting us out of a lease that was almost impossible of 30 years ago. We were put into an impossible lease of 96% for percent. However, I will say that I'm disappointed where we have ended up. I believe that this deal is too big, too complicated, to just be settled among three commissioners. Almost 30 years ago was the last time that the taxpayers, who are on the hook for $350 million plus interest for the next decade, that was the last time they got a chance to vote, was 30 years ago almost. And as we look at this process, even what's going to be put forward today has to go to the NFL, and the NFL owners, they get a vote. So why wouldn't the taxpayers, our shareholders, if the Bengals have to take it to their shareholders to get a vote, why would we not take it to our shareholders to get a vote? 30 years ago, homeowners were promised, as they go to the polls, that they would be included in the deal. They would get a benefit of 30% property tax rollback. In this deal, originally, we were gonna put up $270 million was our original deal, which would have still allowed homeowners to be able to, on a year-by-year basis, possibly get the 30% property tax rollback. And we gotta go with the maximum rollback that we can do, because property owners, homeowners are struggling right now. Now, I don't believe that that should be just our decision. Put it on the ballot so that, let's find out what the homeowners really feel. Do they want to take themselves out of the deal? Let them go to the polls and make that determination, not us. There have been so many versions of this deal, and that's why we back here today. We just voted yesterday. I feel like Groundhog Day. I'm back here again, and because it's so complicated. And so I am concerned on a couple fronts. One is, I introduced the motion yesterday, and I couldn't get one second to consider it, to allow the voters, who are educated, to make the decision if they want to get rid of their own rollback of 30%. Not us to decide. Let the people that's paying decide. This motion would have allowed us to put on the ballot so that every person, I don't care if you're on first shift, second shift, you can't get a ride down here, you're on a bus, you're on a bicycle, you could go to the poll and have your voice heard. 30 years ago was the last time, almost 30 years ago, that the taxpayers had their voice heard. And now with this deal, it'll be another 11 years, almost 40-plus years, before we get a chance to hear from the taxpayers, the people who are gonna have to pay for this. So I'm disappointed that we weren't able, if it's such a great deal, put it to the voters and let them decide. I think this is just too big, it's just too complicated. And I want every person to understand it. That's what happened 30 years ago. People went to the polls, they voted, they were told something, they voted, they high-fived, then they start playing Cool in the Gang celebration, and everybody was happy. But then when they went through the actual lease, and this is before social media, so you know they're gonna go through it now, this is before the smartphone, when they went through it, they got so angry that they actually voted a county commissioner out of office. And that person was seen as the champion of this deal, because it didn't go back to the voters. Voters felt they had been duped. Majority of this process has been behind closed doors, executive sessions, when the real meat and the details really happen. And so, again, it doesn't sit well with me. I know we got the talking points, but it doesn't sit well with me, because I believe that the voters are smart. I think if we got to face the voters, shouldn't this deal have to face the voters? $350 billion plus interest? Those are the things. Now, I asked over and over, can we please put the 30% in there? And I was told, well, we just can't afford it. The taxpayers were told that we can't afford them. Isn't that something? And then we said, oh, if we do that, we'll start getting into the general fund and everything. But we can afford $350 billion over here, but we can't afford Grandma and her saving her house? How can we be, when it comes to the taxpayers, as fiscally irresponsible, but then when it comes to this particular deal, as fiscally responsible? Now, I don't blame the Bengals owners. They doing their job. Their job is for the ownership. But I have some reservations, I have deep reservations, that we wrote the taxpayers out of the deal. The taxpayers are written out. We want them to cash out the money, but we don't want to make no deposits to help them. And so that's where I have been consistent. I said it back in 2019, that when this comes up, it should go to the ballot. I said it in 2020, when this comes up, it should go to the ballot. I said it in 2021, when this comes up, it should go to the ballot. I said it in 2022, that when this comes up, it should go to the ballot. I said it in 2023, when this comes up, it should go to the ballot. I said it in 2024, when this comes up, it should go to the ballot. And I'm saying it, I said it yesterday, I'm saying it today, I'll say it tomorrow. The taxpayers of Hamilton County deserve to have the final say. So I'm disappointed that the taxpayers have been written out of this. I'm very disappointed that we don't believe that the taxpayers will do the right thing. We wouldn't even have two stadiums if the taxpayers didn't show up. I'm also disappointed, there's some things in here that it hasn't been picked up yet, but after they have the Cool in the Gang song, and I love Cool in the Gang celebration, I'm sure the journalists will then start going into the deal. You're gonna find out, number one, that this deal will expire at the same time as the Reds deal. We can barely afford this deal. Can we afford two stadiums negotiated at the same time? I can't even imagine. Number two, we asked for a 15-year deal, we got 11. We originally was gonna put $275 million up, which would have allowed us to still have the taxpayers in the deal. We went with 350, it wrote the taxpayers out. Now, they'll give you 1%, 2%, 3% rollback. I'm talking about the 30% where the taxpayers went and voted for it. A lot of people voted for it. They said, I wasn't into football, but I voted for it because I'm into my home. The other thing that said, I'll clear this again, the state, they'll say, we can go to the state, and they looking for us, and they gonna do something for us. us. I've been hearing that a long time. But when the budget came out from the state, the Speaker of the House and the House of Representatives had $0 in the budget right now for the Bengals, for Cincinnati. They got $600 million for the Browns. When they went to the Senate, they said, wait on the Senate, we going to get it on the Senate. We went to the Senate, they had $0 for the Bengals, $600 million for the Browns. They're written in, they're earmarked. Then they said, well, don't worry, we going to conference committee. Boy, we get to conference committee, we going to do something up there. Conference committee came out, $0 for the Bengals, $600 million for the Browns. Then they said, man, we get to the governor, he's going to, man, he going to take that pen, and he going to veto this thing. He did get a pen out, but he signed the budget with $600 million for the Browns and 0 for the Bengals. Now, what they told us is that they got a fund, and we can come up there and apply, and once we apply, and these are funds, unclaimed funds, where they're understanding it's going to be a lawsuit and people trying to claim their funds, but we could go up there, and now we can compete with every theater in Ohio, every museum in Ohio, even some that'll be locally going for the same amount of money, every sports team in Ohio, the rural areas as well as the urban areas, because we have no carve-out. So they were willing to stand up and say no. So those are the things that kind of bother me in this deal. I worked as hard as I could, I'm going to tell the taxpayer, I worked as hard as I could to keep your 30% commitment, and you went to the polls. And then I said, well, if they're going to get rid of the 30% commitment, let's send it back to the polls, and let's see what the taxpayers have to say directly. And unfortunately, that didn't happen, and I know last, yesterday, we had a different draft, today, we got the same draft, but what's been consistent in both drafts, actually there's some others in here, too, two or three different, five, six drafts, in every draft, the taxpayers was written out. And so I have to be no yesterday, and I got to be no today until the taxpayers have a say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we had a lot to say yesterday about what is in the lease and what has been taken out of the lease, as importantly as what's in the lease. And so, as we described yesterday, we had some last-minute emails, like 1:00 in the morning emails yesterday, trying to clear up some of the final details of the agreement, and we were not able, we just didn't have the time to iron out all the final details. And so we passed the version of the lease that we had agreed upon, our final version, knowing that there were some unresolved issues we might have to deal with. And we talked about that yesterday, and I know Administrator Ludo detailed what some of, and he's done it again, detailed what some of those things were. So the team then, knowing that we had done that, came over and delivered a two-year extension of the current lease. The two-year extension of the current lease is what we're trying to avoid. The extension of the current lease is all the bad stuff for the next two years and maybe beyond that. And so that was something that we did not want, but we also knew that the Bengals had been at the table all this time negotiating with us, and we figured that they really didn't want that either. And so, given the fact that they had, you know, in this, it's a unilateral decision that because of the old lease and how bad the old lease is, they have the option to extend, or had the option to extend the current lease two years, five times, so for 10 years. And so we've been trying all this time to avoid that, to make sure that we get something better for the taxpayers. We do not want the current lease to be extended for any period of time. And so we reached out to the Bengals and said, we understand that the two-year extension has been offered. We, though, expect that if we can hammer out these last details, we can come to an agreement that will be forward-thinking and better for them, better for us. And so we reached out and said, can we hammer out these last details that we didn't have the time to do prior to? And so that's what we did yesterday and really today. So we got those issues figured out. Once again, and I will say this, I said it yesterday, I think it's worth repeating, the lease that we are offering, the new lease, limits liability for this county. In the old lease, we've got liability, uncapped expenses over and over again, whether it's the big projects or the CapEx that we do every year, all the things that, remember, in the old lease, it talks about if other stadiums get certain upgrades, the Bengals can ask for those upgrades, no matter what they cost. These are unlimited liabilities for this county. We have this much funding. We cannot afford unlimited liabilities. And so this lease takes those limited liabilities out. And so we have a capped expenditure here annually, we've got a capped expenditure here when it comes to the capital improvements that are going to be the bigger transformational projects in the stadium. We've got this cap, no enhancement language anymore, so that's a cap liability. So we have worked really hard to make sure that the taxpayers of this county aren't held to standards that we simply can't meet, and that were in the old lease. It was just, it was just not a good deal for the taxpayers, as we've said over and over again. So we reach out to the Bengals, we negotiate back and forth over a very short period of time, and we have now come to a final agreement related to the original lease and the outstanding issues that existed yesterday. And so I've got in front of me a signed copy of the final lease that we are voting on today. It's been signed by the Bengals. And so, once we vote for the resolution, we will have a final lease, no new taxes, a better lease for the taxpayers in this community, and keeping the Bengals here for over a decade. So I'm glad to be part of the team that got this done. We thanked everybody yesterday, but some of them are here again today, and I think it does bear repeating that without the team, we would not be sitting here today, between our lawyers, between our administrator, between the prosecutor's office. We had a lot of people, a lot of experts, David, you know, and by the way, the experts have also weighed in here at the, you know, kind of the last moment, saying this, what we have in front of us is something that everyone can recommend to this county commission. This is an improvement upon what we have, and it's good for the taxpayers. And so I appreciate particularly, David, your comments related to your advice, you know, you are a person that does this throughout the country, and we have been extremely grateful to have your perspective on what we're doing here. So I am, let me, I'm, I just, yes, yes, sir. Yes, please do.
If I could just real quickly interject and just want to recognize and thank Mr. Dwayne Herring, who is here from the Cincinnati Bengals today, brought up the signed and executed version of the lease. So, Dwayne, just thanks for being here.
Yes, and I was actually getting to that. Thank you, but thank you. But thank you for, I was looking for the signature page, which I have now found. It's the one with all the blue flags on it, should have known that. So, yeah, so, you know, our other partner in all of this, of course, is the Bengals. And the Bengals, they are challenging negotiators. They are looking out for their interests, just like we're looking out for ours, but they didn't have to stay at the table with us. They could have slid this extension anytime. They could have slid it two months ago, a year, they could have slid it anytime, and they didn't do that. They stayed at the table, they slid it yesterday, but we knew that they were simply trying to protect their interests, but we also thought they would come back to the table, and they did. And so I was getting to it, I swear, it's on my paper. But, and I also want to thank my colleagues for the discussions that we've had. I want to thank the taxpayers for weighing in. I said this yesterday, but we could not have arrived to what we arrived to without the input from the people that live in this community that have a vested interest in their county asset, which is the stadium and the team. So I've got, I've got the lease here, Commissioners. I don't, yeah, there we go. That's right. All right, so I am going to move forward then with the resolution. So let me find that. This is a resolution rescinding the resolution adopted July 31st, 2025, and authorizing county administrator to execute a revised lease agreement binding between the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, Ohio, and the Cincinnati Bengals, Inc. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
No.
Thank you. That is all we have before us. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?